Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unanimous, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussinow?
Here.
Trustee Krisminski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of agenda items. There are two?
Three.
Three. Three add-ons. Would you go through that with us, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. We have a proposed add-on under Supervisor's Office, item number sixteen, confirm township funding of additional liaison officer at Dakota High School. Proposed add-on under Treasurer's Office, item number eighteen, 2020 tax collection agreements, and a proposed add-on under Treasurer's Office, item number nineteen, Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain Extension and Improvement Project. That's all I have.
Anyone else have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Hearing non, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or amended. I apologize.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the agenda with the additions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the bills, there are two bill runs as usual. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill runs, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize the payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The minutes are before you this evening. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from closed session October ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and from the previous meeting minutes of October ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bussinow to approve the minutes from October the ninth, the regular meeting and the closed session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Be consent, agenda, our routine matters that frequently come before the Board. If you want to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I make motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on agenda items only. If you want to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium and state your name. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Tom Sokol. My address is on record with the Clerk's Office. I wanted to congratulate the residents of McComb Township this evening on the Ethics Ordinance. It's been a long time coming, and I'm confident that the Board will support this this evening. I wanted to highlight a few things on this process as a member of this committee for the past eighteen to twenty-four months. This has really been a cross-functional effort. It started with Mr. Bussinow. This was his idea from the beginning, and it quickly transformed to a project that was embraced by a diverse group of residents, where we held meetings at the North Ranch Library that both Mr. Bussinow and Clerk Posey attended. And I'd also only be telling half the story if I didn't highlight the more recent collaboration between Mrs. Nevers, Mrs. Goodhue, our township attorney, and hopefully many other Board members this evening. I want to share with the residents some of the feedback that we came across through this process. At first, we had some Board members that were concerned that this might be used to target them unfairly, and toward the end of the process, we got some feedback from employees that were concerned this process would be used to target them. But looking at the positive side of things, maybe it was a good thing that some of this feedback took place, and multiple stakeholders felt a little bit uncomfortable at first, and hopefully it brought us together, and everybody feels a little bit more engaged, that they got to put their input into the process, and that everyone feels more comfortable today. To be clear, this is a tool that's applicable and inclusive to all Board of Trustees members, appointees, and employees, and I want to stress to residents that all this may have started because of reaction to corruption from one or two trustees in our township. This was never meant to target a specific individual or group. The main purpose of this ordinance is to serve as a deterrent and to take the current level of accountability and transparency to a higher, more stringent level. I want to express my gratitude to everyone at Township Hall that collaborated on this, the residents that supported this effort the entire way, and a special thank you to all of my fellow committee members that volunteered their personal time to make this happen tonight. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I ask for your support this evening on the Ethics Ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jim Jelios, item eight. As Chairman of the Ethics Committee, I obviously support the approval of this item. I'd like to thank fellow Ethic Committee members Richard Paul, Richard Meyerli, Rob Montilla, Steve Ferrari, and Tom Sokol for all the hard work and time they invested into this project to make it a reality. It's our belief that this ordinance will serve as a guide to clarify the proper behavior expected from the residents of this township regarding its public officials. This ordinance provides an avenue for employees and elected officials with a procedure to pursue clarification on any ethical issues in question. It could potentially help both the employees and elected officials. The goal of this ordinance is to be a deterrent, to prevent unethical behavior, and to be preventive in nature to ensure that only the best behaviors and values are followed. I'd also like to thank resident Tom Champion for his initial contributions early on that helped make this a reality. A special thanks to trustee Tim Bussinow, who started this project and whose leadership led to its completion. I also thank all the residents as well who supported this project. Special thanks must go to McComb County Ethics Board Chairman Dr. Donald Amboyer for his invaluable advice and help that greatly assisted our committee in this project. I also, excuse me, I also thank the employees of this township for their valuable input and suggestions towards this ordinance. Last but not least, thanks must also go to the Board members that were willing to meet with our committee to facilitate and finalize this project, such as Nancy Nevers, Karen Goodhue, Kristi Posey, and Tim Bussinow. This also includes Tom Assorti for his efforts and legal review of this ordinance. Therefore, I hope the Board of Trustees will vote to approve this ordinance and its procedures. I also look forward to seeing the permanent Ethics Board being appointed. I urge the residents of this township to consider applying for and serving on the permanent Ethics Board to better serve our community. It's time for us to move forward by passing this Ethics Ordinance. It's something the residents wanted, and it's something this township needed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business, which is the Ethics Ordinance. It's been postponed from September twenty-fifth meeting to now. Anyone on the Board want to comment?
Madam Chair, after the summation from both Mr. Sokol and Mr. Jelios, and I believe it's time to make a motion that we approve the Ethics Ordinance.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to adopt the Ethics Ordinance. All in favors? Do you want a roll call?
Sure.
Please.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Just kidding, yes.
Trustee Krisminski?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This ordinance will be published and takes effect in thirty days?
Correct.
Thank you. We will now move on to new business, and the first is a request from Water and Sewer Department to approve payment to Dan's Excavating for the water main repair work completed on North Avenue just south of Twenty-three Mile Road. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. As the Supervisor's already stated, this is a request to pay Dan's Excavating in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. And like she's already said, this is for emergency water main repair, which involved a lot of asphalt replacement and was probably something more than Water and Sewer Department could have handled. We're recommending approval. I might add that Dan's Excavating is one of our many pre-qualified contractors that are on the list.
Thank you. Anyone from the Board have any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Hearing none, Madam Supervisor, I'll make a motion to pay Dan's Excavating Incorporated for the water main repair work completed on five fourteen, two thousand and nineteen on North Avenue just south of Twenty-three Mile Road for a total cost of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Excuse me?
Twenty-three? Or twenty?
Twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two, seventy-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the payment to Dan's Excavating. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request to approve the contract modification number one for sanitary sewer rehabilitation, full length and sectional CIPP lining. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Board. What we have here tonight is a request by Water and Sewer to adjust the contract that we currently have with Incitroform. The contract amount, the contract increase request, will be a hundred and fifty-four thousand, thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. And what we have here is, as we've cleaned and TV'd through the course of the summer, the contract we have with Pipe Tech, we've uncovered several spots that needed immediate attention. I've discussed some of these immediate attention spots with the three full-time officials, and some of these we've done, and some are still yet to be done, but this is more of a housekeeping matter of formally increasing this contract by the requested amount. This will be, this contract is with Incitroform Technologies, recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I would approve the modification of contract number one in the amount of one fifty-four, oh, thirty-three point sixty.
Motion by Mr. Krisminski?
Support.
Support? Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the contract modification as discussed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. The next one is a request to approve final balancing contract modification number two. And Mr. Wanglin, if you can take us through this, please?
I can do that. Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. And what we have here is another bit of a housekeeping matter. This was last summer's contractor that did the cleaning and TVing for us. This is a request to reduce their contract by a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is about a fifty percent reduction in their contract from last summer. I'll just say that the contract with this contractor did not go well, and we just basically got frustrated at a point and decided to just pull the plug, if you will, and end the contract. So I'm recommending this reduction in this amount. Thank you.
Can we have more of those? Anyone have any questions?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the final balancing contract modification number two for the total net change reduction of one hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for project zero two four nine dash zero one four six.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And the next one is to approve the final pay estimate number six and balancing contract modification, sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV investigation, and FCIPP lining for work performed through August sixth. Mr. Wanglin, please.
Thank you, Board. And this goes hand in hand with the previous agenda item, and what this is, is just the final pay estimate, the final pay cert for that contract from last summer. And this is the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, fifty-two cents. This will be payable to Diversified Infrastructure Services, recommending we move forward with this.
Thank you. Any questions on this one?
Madam Chair, hearing none, and a recommendation of the Water and Sewer Superintendent is to go ahead and pay the final pay estimate number six in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion by Mr. Krisminski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the final pay estimate number six and balancing contract modification. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And the last one is a request to approve the construction pay estimate number five for sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV investigation for work performed through September twenty-second. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Board. Again, this is pay cert number five. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred, ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents. This is the contractor that is finishing up with the current TVing and cleaning program from this summer, and we are recommending approval of this pay cert. Thank you.
Any questions on this one?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I would move on for the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Superintendent to pay estimate number five in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four ninety-six, eighty-five.
Motion by Mr. Krisminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the construction pay estimate number five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Now, we have a fire department request to purchase a Lucas three chest compression system. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the Board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase a Lucas three version three-point-one chest compression system and the four-year maintenance, preventative maintenance agreement. The Lucas machine delivers consistent, high-quality CPR compressions, thus increasing the chance of survival for patients that have suffered a cardiac arrest. The fire department was provided with the Lucas three device in July to try, as the device was budgeted for in the current fiscal year. The device has been used numerous times and has provided us with at least four successful saves. I included in your packet two emails from fire personnel that have used the device and were able to save a life with it. The device can only be purchased directly from the manufacturer, and therefore bids could not be received unmitigated. I've included the single-source letter from the manufacturer. A grant has been submitted for the purchase of three additional Lucas three devices with the goal of having one on each of the first-out medical response units from each fire station. We are ten to twelve months away from receiving an answer on the status of that grant. With that, it's my recommendation that one Lucas three version three-point-one chest compression system and the four-year preventative maintenance agreement be purchased from Stryker at a total cost of twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of a Lucas chest compression system and the four-year preventive maintenance system agreement at a total cost of twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bussinow to approve the purchase of the Lucas three chest compression system. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Madam Supervisor, just have a couple of informational items. First, back on September eleventh, the Board approved the promotion of probationary firefighter Marshall due to nine-eleven events. I was unable to attend that meeting. Tonight is the first time when we've been able to make our schedules work, and firefighter Marshall is here to be recognized and have the formal presentation of his helmet, shield, and badge. So at this time, I would call firefighter Marshall up to receive his helmet, shield, and badge for his successful completion of probation. As we approach Halloween next week, this time of year, we receive phone calls and questions regarding the use of the tornado siren to signal the start of Halloween and the end of trick-or-treating. I just want to make it clear that the fire department does not set off the tornado sirens for any reason other than the guidelines under the county emergency management of which our systems, our tornado sirens are a part of. The county does not allow the sirens to be activated. We can't activate the sirens just for the township. If we activate them, it activates all of the tornado sirens within McComb County. So we will not activate any of the sirens to signify the start of the end of trick-or-treating. I know communities next to us have in the past, and may again, but they are not on the county system, and so they can operate as they choose, but we will not do that. And lastly, with the construction of the new public safety building, if you've been on Alma Drive, you'll see that it's down to one lane. It's a congested site as the construction progresses on the public safety building, and now this site will get even worse as construction starts on the Assisted Living Center to the west of Alma Drive in that vacant lot, which is scheduled to start in the next week. With the public safety building, we're averaging anywhere from forty to eighty vehicles on-site a day for that construction, and so the contractor's working as fast as they can to get that opened, but we're probably two to three weeks out from that being able to open up to both lanes. So I would just ask that you be patient and understand that the contractor is working as fast as they can to get all the underground in, get everything buried so that they can get the road repaired and open back up.
Thank you, Chief. We will now move on to Supervisor's request, and that is a reappointment to the Act three forty-five Pension Board. I am requesting reappointment of Mr. Richard Meyerli to the Act three forty-five Pension Board. He has served on this board for many years and is definitely an asset to the township. Mr. Meyerli's four-year term of office would end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Any questions?
Madam, hearing none, I would confirm your reappointment of Richard Meyerli to the Board.
Motion by Mr. Krisminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the reappointment of Richard Meyerli to the Act three forty-five Pension Board. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is the add-on. This is to confirm the township funding of the additional liaison officer at Dakota High School. If you remember, last year, we approved the additional liaison officer, and they called last week and wanted to be sure that we were going to fund it again. It is in the budget for next year, and at this point, I am asking for your approval.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to confirm township funding of the additional liaison officer at Dakota High School.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krisminski, to confirm the township funding of the additional officer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, we have the Clerk's Office, and this is a request to adopt charitable gaming license resolution. Mr. Pierce?
Madam Supervisor, members of the Board, the township is in receipt of a request from Goodbye Toys Charity. They are a nonprofit organization that works to assist low-income families with being able to provide not only school supplies but gifts and things of that nature around the holidays for those types of families through various, either kind of shops, shopping opportunities, fifty-fifty raffles, things of that nature. All their paperwork is in order. They are exempt under the IRS statute and are available to obtain this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hearing none, I'll make the motion to adopt the charitable gaming license resolution for Goodbye Toys Charity Incorporated.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Krisminski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members.
That resolution is adopted. Next, we have the add-on for the twenty-twenty tax collection agreements. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes. Every year about this time, we receive requests from the school districts to collect their summer taxes, and on behalf of the four school districts of New Haven, Utica, Chippewa Valley, and Lons Cruz pursuant to public Act three-three-three of nineteen eighty-two, we would like to offer the collection of their summer taxes at a dollar seventy-five per parcel. This is the same price that we have been charging in the last couple of years, so it's not increasing. So at this moment, I would like to make a motion to approve the collection.
I'll support that.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Krisminski, to approve the twenty-twenty tax collection agreements. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And the last add-on is for the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain Extension and Improvement Project.
That's a mouthful. We received from McComb County Public Works Department our assessment for the improvements and extension to the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain. We must pass the resolution to be able to prepay our assessment, therefore avoiding interest charges, by November the first, two thousand and nineteen. I conferred with the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and he is in agreement to prepay the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. The resolution is as follows. Whereas pursuant to the petitions received by the Charter Township of Waterford, Oakland County, and the City of Sterling Heights, McComb County requesting the maintenance, extension, and improvement of the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain pursuant to section five thirty-five of Michigan Public Act forty of the public acts of nineteen fifty-six as amended, MCL two eighty point five-three-five, and filed with the Director of the Michigan Department of Agriculture, proceedings have been carried out by the Augmented Drainage Board and Drainage Board for the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain Drainage District to acquire, finance, construct, improve, and replace certain wastewater facilities as set forth in Attachment A, and said project having been determined to be necessary for the public health. And whereas on And whereas on August 21st, 2019, the Drainage Board for the Drainage District confirmed and adopted a final order of apportionment, and the cost of the project has been apportioned against the following public corporations in the counties of Oakland and Macomb. And I'm only going to read the one for Macomb Township is 9.4344%. And whereas on September 18th, 2019, the Drainage Board approved and adopted the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain Special Assessment Rule Number One relating to Series 2019 Bonds with respect to the cost of the first segment of the project not to exceed $12 million for their acquisition and capital payment to the Great Lakes Water Authority in accordance with the Final Order of Apportionment. And whereas pursuant to the authorization provided in Section 528 of Chapter 21 of the Drain Code, the Drainage Board of the Drainage District expects to provide for the issuance of one or more series of bonds to finance the cost of the project and the cost of issuance of such bonds in anticipation of the collection of assessments to be made pursuant to the Drain Code and to pledge the full faith and credit of the Drainage District for the prompt payment of the principal thereof and the interest thereon. And whereas such bonds will be payable from the collection of special assessments against the public corporations, said special assessments to be duly confirmed as provided in the Drain Code. And whereas prior to the issuance of said bonds for the first segment, the Drainage Board has notified the township to permit, should the township determine expedient, to prepay the assessment and avoid interest and finance charges associated with the anticipated 2019 bond issue for this project segment. And whereas the Drainage Board has requested that the township adopt a resolution and affirming its intention to prepay its 2019 drain assessment for this project segment and forward saying by November the 1st, 2019, and make full payment of the assessment by December the 1st, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the township hereby confirms that it will pay in full its drain assessment in the amount of $1,124,580.48 pursuant to the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain 2019 Special Assessment Rule Number One. Be it further resolved that the township treasurer is directed to notify the Drainage Board for the Oakland-McComb Interceptor Drain Drainage District by November the 1st, 2019, and of its intention to submit payment no later than the December 1st, 2019. Be it further resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded. At this motion, I'd like to make, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Krasminski to approve this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Krasminski?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we come to comments, and this is on, public comments on non-agenda items only. You want to talk to the board, please come to the podium. And remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Tom Sokol. My address is on record with the clerk's office. I wanted to talk tonight about something that's really hot in our community, and that's the water rates. And I believe it's a really complex issue. It's difficult to understand. There's a lot of different moving parts and different dynamics that impact the rates. A lot of it, and a lot of your votes and options that you have seem to be really limited. And the recommendation I wanted to make to this board is to have some type of forum, some type of town hall or special meeting for the residents to answer questions about the water rates. Some of the things residents are bringing up is the, one of the issues is having a separate meter. What are some other things we could do to push back on the Great Lakes Water Authority? What's the real cost analysis for having a separate meter? What about having some type of holding tank or water tower like some other communities have? What's the cost-benefit analysis around that? This last summer, a lot of residents weren't watering their grass. A lot of times, these small percentage increases that are being reported at these meetings, what the residents are seeing in the real world, a lot of times are reported to be completely different. So there's a lot of questions around that. I think it's pertinent. I think that we need some additional time, maybe bringing in the proper people, the proper experts, and maybe, you know, a three-minute discussion at a board meeting. We need a little bit more than that. So I think if we had some type of town hall or special meeting on that, if you could consider that, I think it would be a win-win for our community, and we could maybe debunk some urban legends and maybe come up with some other outside-the-box ideas for our community. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. John Parkinson, address is on file, clerk's office. Tonight, I want to talk about the Kirk-Huth Bill. I know it's a hot topic, and I did put in a FOIA request. It was true denied. I have a denial here in my hand. I did, in writing, send an appeal to the supervisor's email. Madam Supervisor, I don't know if you received it because I didn't get any reply. So then I was informed that I should have emailed the whole board. So in fact, I did that today. However, being that I did email the supervisor, I would remind the board or, you know, that October 30th is the 10-day deadline, and we don't have a meeting until after that deadline. Not sure how this FOIA thing works as far as the 10 days that you all have to respond. But I know this is an ongoing issue, and again, I'd like to remind everybody that we did, as a board, or you did as a board, vote to keep this, excuse me here, non, I believe you guys voted to not keep the matter attorney-client privilege on 9/25/2019. Then on 10/9/2019, the board then voted to uphold the denial for Ms. Western's FOIA request for the same bill. I would like to know what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Renee Ellis Sumter. I reside at 48774 Bradford Drive. My husband and I, we have an issue with Luigi's. Summer of 2018, Luigi's replaced two sections of sidewalk in front of our house, causing damage to our driveway, which several cracks. I notified the grounds department immediately afterwards, leaving messages for a return call. Jason returned my call. I also talked to Rachel on several occasions, starting from October 11th, 2018, stating she was new, and will talk to Jason to find out the status. I talked to Rachel October 12th, 2018. She stated she will contact Luigi's site supervisor and will send someone out to correct the problem. On June 19th, 2019, I talked to Rachel. She asked me if I had pictures and to email them to her, and she was going to forward them to Luigi's. Per Rachel, Luigi's claimed that the damage per Google was already there, which is not true. There were two small cracks on each side of the driveway. And I asked Rachel at the time, who was the supervisor in charge of her? She told me it was Jason. I told her that I needed to talk with someone over Jason. So she recommended that I talk to the township supervisor. I talked, on October 14th, I talked to the township supervisor. She stated Luigi's was not going to come out to fix my problem. I needed to get an attorney and sue Luigi's, and Luigi's did the work for me. I stated to her that I did not contract Luigi's. The township did. My husband and I have been dealing with this since last year. I've been extremely patient in trying to get something done, and nothing's been done. I have pictures showing the damage to our property, to our driveway. I have pictures of Google Map. There are new pictures of Google Map that are out now that just recently came out.
Thank you.
My problem is concerning the conversation that my wife had with Ms. Dunn there. Not only were you unprofessional, you were downright rude. We did some research on this concrete company, and they got one star out of five, which made me wonder why you would even hire these people to do work on our properties. Then we did some research on you, and I no longer wonder. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Frank Kuzmato, 16188 Jenny Drive. Good evening. I was always meaning over the last several meetings, wanting to review the millage increases that took place. And I'm happy to report that on June 26th, 2019, this board actually voted to slightly reduce the millage rate on my home and my wife's home from 6, excuse me, I'm getting old, .6511160, I'm sorry, 65160 to 6461. But that's a slight decrease. Now that would be good news. That's good news. It saves me money, right? But the question I have is what, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is why there was no questions about why the millages was going down. Was it because it was increased property values, or was it because the budget was rich? Fire operating stood the same at two mills. Fire pension went from .07470 to 1.009. And for those of listening, that's a 12.5 times increase, or 1,200%. Township police stood the same. Now, that was interesting because I thought we added officers, and there's a general view that those prices are going up every year, so I don't understand why it stood the same. Again, rising home values may account for more revenue. And finally, the parks and recreation went from .7938 to down to .7871. Again, another decrease. But what really struck me is that there's no questions being asked why this is occurring. On the water issue that Mr. Sokol just brought up, I asked for the same type of town hall meeting to take place, I think, a year or two ago. It's a good idea. It is a complex issue, but the true cost of service, which the Great Lakes Water Authority is allowed to charge us, there's a lot of devil in the details. Are they subsidizing other jurisdictions or municipalities such as Highland Park that hasn't paid since they went into bankruptcy? Finally, the question of what occurred with this financial balancing, where's the question? Was it, you know, was it, why wasn't it, why did we hire the person to begin with? Was there insufficient investigation? I asked that the court, not the court, that the board begin asking questions as to these matters rather than just voting yes and educate themselves and the public on why these changes are being made and certifications are being made. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mark Grabo. Address is on file with the clerk. This evening, I come in front of you guys, continuing to watch the numbers, watch the budgets, continue to watch the budget decrease. I watched the fund balance drop drastically. I look back and see the purchases you guys made over the last couple of years. You've made purchases that absolutely are not with the township's best interest. Now, we have some new individuals that have come in and have started to push back. Many of you have come up with plans and grander ideals. You guys have created a disaster for Macomb Township. You bought parks, you bought properties, you've added things. You've done zero for the design of the infrastructure. And I do not hold the entire board responsible for this, but I hold the old board responsible. You guys had the plans, the layouts. So let's get with the program. You guys are spending a fortune on properties. I'll just wait. Maybe you'll pay attention sooner or later. Apparently, something has you distracted, Ms. Dunn. Thank you. Now, you've bought properties, you've spent money, you've done nothing for infrastructure design. You now have properties at the north end of the township. What's your plans to get the traffic flow in line and be able to make sure the security and the safety of the residents in the north end of the township are taken care of? We had plans and we had agreements, but you four that are still here from before, which shouldn't be, wanted a beautiful covered bridge. It didn't work. We now have two bridges out, and we have residents that are cornered off in an area. What about their safety? What about their concerns? What about the traffic flow? You wouldn't like it if 21 Mile Road was shut down, would you, Roger? And you had to go around all the time? What about if the fire department couldn't get to you? They surely wouldn't be able to use their brand-new chest compression units if Luckman Road was closed. Look at this. Pay attention. You guys have an opportunity, infrastructure and the funds, pay for those bridges, and the county has agreed in the past to pay those funds back. What part do you guys not get? Let's look for the residents. You're here for a reason, but many of you won't be here for long. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, we will move on then to board comments. We'll start off with trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. Before I give some comments about the ethics ordinance, I just want to tell you, I sincerely wasn't sure if I wanted to give comments tonight. I know that some of the things I'm going to say is, I'm going to repeat what a couple of the ethics board members eloquently said. And I knew I was going to say something if it didn't pass, that was going to be for sure. But the fact that it did pass, I wasn't sure. But when I've thought about the process that, and where this started, I think it would almost be awkward if I don't give some closing remarks about the ethics ordinance, and hopefully then we can move on. I can tell you, this has been an emotional journey. There's been tears of frustration at times, and 40 minutes ago, they were almost tears of joy up here. But, so here's my comments about the whole process. 653 days ago, the residents, employees, current elected officials, former elected officials, current and former appointed officials of this community took a first but crucial step to creating a more ethical culture at Town Hall. They took this step while attending a meeting that I helped with a team facilitate at the Clinton-McComb North Branch, Clinton-McComb Library North Branch. This meeting was a direct result of federal and state, criminal and civil investigations into unethical, corrupt, and illegal activities that took place inside and outside of Town Hall. These investigations have resulted in former trustees being arrested. These investigations have resulted in former trustees being arrested. One has pled guilty and another still awaits his fate. Why do I bring up these embarrassing truths tonight? Let me offer this reason. We all remember learning in school different versions of this quote in history classes. Those who do not learn from the past are doomed to repeat it. We could not just, as some or many suggested to me, just move on from these embarrassing truths without demonstrating we learned from it. We know other trustees, employees who were here, especially when Mr. Bucci was allowed to freely operate, they've admitted to knowing about or witnessing or worse these unethical and illegal activities. Some have admitted this in many forms, including during board meetings. An unnamed employee is mentioned in the conspiracy explanation of the federal charges pending against former trustee Bucci. Why did these things happen? Well, as a high school government and law teacher, I teach and stress the importance of written law to guide the actions of residents and governments. Today, we have put into written law in the form of a local ordinance enforceable safeguards to try to prevent, try to prevent current and future elected and public officials and employees from repeating history. Without these policies and procedures in place, it was very challenging for employees, elected officials and appointees to shed light on unethical activities without fear of retaliation, harassment or even losing their job. On a personal level, as I had mentioned before, this was most evident with me in treatment I have received at times for being one of many that were bringing light to unethical practices. Imagine what employees faced day to day without written laws and procedures in place. Currently in my high school law classes, we've actually been discussing, including today, what our country and lives would be like if the Constitution didn't provide your rights in writing. We saw what our township looked like without a written ethics ordinance. I am very, very excited tonight because for 20 years as a social studies teacher, I have taught students about government, laws and political systems. I have taught them residents deserve the utmost confidence in the integrity of their government. Government must be open, it must be transparent and accountable. To assure public confidence, leaders in government must set the ethical standard. Tonight, we took a huge step in supporting a more ethical township government. But as any written law, it is only as strong as its enforcement. There will be many watching that this is enforced. Before I relinquish the microphone, I think we need to thank many for this moment. First of all, I would like to thank all the residents and others who showed up to the first meeting almost 20 months ago at the Clinton McComb Public Library North Branch. Some notables in attendance at the first meeting were our clerk Kristi Posey, former supervisor Mark Grabal, former deputy supervisor Jim Jelios, our fire chief Bob Phillips. I believe our planning and ZBA appointee Aaron Tuckfield was in attendance. I want to thank for a second time tonight Tom Champion for leading a second resident ethics meeting and introducing us to the county ethics ordinance. I'd like for a second time to thank Donna Boyer, a leading member of the group who created the McComb County Ethics Ordinance, for his input to me and to the committee. I want to thank the admins and moderators of local social media Facebook pages for their help in keeping the light shined on the process. I want to thank traditional media for following and correctly reporting the process the entire time. A very special thanks to the members of the appointed ethics committee who put in hundreds of volunteer hours. I've said before up here, what we do up here is a snapshot. You don't know how many hours they put in. And the leader of the ethics committee, Jim Jelios, Tom Sokol, Rob Mantilla, Rich Marley, Richard Paul and Steve Ferrari. Most of all, I want to thank all the residents who supported us in the process. I want to thank my fellow board members for voting this unanimously. This is a great day for clean government in our township. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. With Mr. Parkinson coming up and asking regarding the FOIA request again, I'm a little confused. When I left the meeting last Wednesday regarding the FOIA request, I took some notes on this. So on 9/18, there was a request by Ms. Western for the FOIA. She FOIA'd the bill. On 9/20, she was denied that legal bill. On 9/22, the appeal was filed. On 9/25, the board came and voted that it's not attorney-client privilege. Then on 10/9, I was surprised that the appeal was still on the board as an agenda item and then it was denied. I guess I don't understand the process if there was a motion for reconsideration, if there was something else done, because I'm just curious how that process works. Because now we're going to have the same process all over again. I don't, I don't know, Ms. Posey, Mr. Assorti, I don't know. Is there, is there supposed to be a motion for reconsideration? How prior to that? I don't know why there was two votes on it. I think we're going to have the same issue again. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the process.
Are you, I would suggest the attorney answer that question.
I don't have the minutes in front of me. I think there was some discussion about what the actual motion was at that time and whether or not it was affirmative vote to actually waive the attorney-client privilege or if there was a motion that did not pass that kept them subject to the attorney-client privilege.
So if the motion was to not make it attorney-client privilege?
The motion was actually, Madam Chair, if I may. The motion was to keep the invoice attorney-client privilege.
Correct.
It had support and it failed.
So I would think at that point, the appeal would be null and void, correct? Because the
That was our opinion.
There was no affirmative vote to waive the attorney-client privilege that I've suggested repeatedly. If you're going to waive the attorney-client privilege, you need to do it by action of the board and waive it.
I thought that's what we did do.
So voting to keep it is different than voting to waive? This almost sounds like, I remember 20 years ago, what, depends on what the definition of is is.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure what the process is because I have a feeling it's going to continue to happen. So I'm just confused and just wanted clarification from that.
Madam Chair, if I can, I'll give you the clarification that I can provide you as the FOIA coordinator because we continue to have the same confusion and battle, the same information. On September 18th, from Mr. Assorti to Roger Cardamone, we received a memo with regards to this. A synopsis of a part of it, it says, "Based on that discussion and his opinion regarding the nature of the information contained in his invoicing, disclosure of the invoice provided by the finance director is appropriate. All other documentation would be exempt from disclosure as it contains information subject to the attorney-client privilege." That was with regards to providing the detailed invoice.
Okay.
Okay. On September 27th, which is following the September 25th meeting where the motion failed to keep the invoice attorney-client privilege. My office sent to our general counsel, "What is the status of Mr. Cusamano's appeal of this denial? Does the board need to take action? Was the motion that failed at Wednesday's meeting sufficient to release the billing details? If so, should the township consult with Craig Lane to determine if any redactions are appropriate?" The response we got was, "I am not aware of a motion to waive the attorney-client privilege. Per my response, I was simply trying to help by contacting Mr. Lang. Accordingly, I do not know what would be redacted other than the entire invoice which was done." So under, that's where we left off. So that's what we've been informed to do and we followed accordingly.
Anyone else?
In my opinion, on a serious note, I know I was tongue-in-cheek a second ago. I am really, really confused. If I had a decision at my home, whether to, my wife wanted me to keep the roof or get rid of it and I said, "I don't want to keep it, but that doesn't mean that we should get rid of it." I'm not making a joke here because what we voted on was to keep attorney-client privilege. We turned that down. How can, how can we not say that we didn't vote to get rid of attorney-client privilege? I am extremely confused. I think the vote, this is my opinion and you can ask me if I'm wrong. I think the vote didn't go the way they, they thought it was going to go and now they're trying to backtalk. I think what Ms. Smith is saying is that if somebody was really confused, what they should have done is had a reconsideration vote. That is what statute, I'm not sure if it's statute, but that's what maybe
Ome.
Ome would tell you to do. We never did that. So we voted not to keep that bill attorney-client privilege. So as you set up, then there was no basis to deny the FOIA appeal. I wasn't here for the FOIA appeal. I can't speak to that. I'm just confused on the first piece that we didn't vote to take away client privilege. We only voted not to keep it. I am confused on, and all this is coming post, post-motion vote. I mean, I, sometimes at a board meeting, I get new information and I, I mean, or, or I could go back and say, "I was confused on some of the data you presented to me." And so I'm not sure that we really understood the vote we took that night. I thought it was very clear that we took a vote not to keep that bill attorney-client privilege and it passed. And now we're saying that's not what we did.
That's where I'm confused about. That's, I, I'm thinking the same way you did, Mr. Bassano. I just think if we're going to continue to have this problem, we have to have a clear path to follow.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would just like to explain my two votes. First time I voted, let it all out, the invoice, everything. And then after that meeting, it was explained to me that this was still in litigation. Next picture show, the vote came and then I voted in reverse. That, those were the reasons I voted as I did. But I, but I just wanted to settle the two, the reasons why I voted the two ways that I did. And that's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nevers, I don't understand it. It was still in litigation.
Yes. The grievance hadn't been settled. Okay? The grievance between one of the employees and Mr. Assorti. And so then I thought, okay, I've made a mistake. I wanted it totally open. And then since then, I have found out that attorney-client privilege, as was presented by the attorney, that they wanted this attorney-client privilege. But I guess we could have said, okay, but we don't care about that. That's what I've understood from that, since then. So.
I'm sorry. And Madam Chair, we, I thought when we hired that attorney, we hired that attorney not for the strategy of that case, but to investigate the process that was going on related to how it was being handled internally. It, that's, that's not the law firm that's handling the actual case that you are talking about, is it? Or am I confused? I thought we hired Lang to look at, look at how it was being handled internally. Lang, is Lang representing us in that pending litigation with that employee?
We don't have litigation with that employee.
That's what I mean. Right now, I'm really confused on what's being, but, but is Lang representing us in, but is Lang representing us in that litigation? I thought we hired Lang to look at the processes that was going on in our HR department.
It is my understanding, Madam Chair, that per Ms. Smith, she gave a list of lawyers that could look into the circumstance of the grievance. Okay? And Mr. Lane was the one that did the investigation. However, it hadn't been settled, as I understand, between the union and the supervisor at that time and Mr. Assorti in there too. So I believe tonight we can correct that. If somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to keep following up with this because the board is the client. The board hired Mr. Lang to look at the process. So if there is something in that bill that pertains to strategy, the strategy would be between the board and investigating the HR process, not the litigation with the employee. So I'm not, I'm even more confused about what's going on with this.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes. I was going to say, but go ahead, Roger.
In order to settle this discrepancy that we're having, I'd like to make a motion to show transparency for the township. I'd like to make a motion to release the client township bill for the lawyer that did the independent investigation for the township from last meeting.
And I would like to second that, but I want to stipulate what I'm seconding. I am seconding that we turn over all of the documents for the detail of the bill as well as the findings that happened from Mr. Lang against Mr. Assorti. I think it all should come out in spirit of transparency. That's my second. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I get a rule call void on that, please?
So we are voting to release the bill?
Everything.
Oh, and everything?
Everything.
Okay, okay.
There's a motion by Mr. Chris Minsky.
Support.
Supported by
Was supported by Nevers.
I supported.
Supported by Ms. Nevers.
Ms. Smith, that still allows discussion. Did you still have something you wanted to say?
I wasn't talking about the litigation. I just want to know what the process is because we're going to continue to have the same process. So I want to know what the process is. We can, we can do whatever motion anybody wants to do. I just want to know what the process is. If someone requests a FOIA request and it's denied and they file an appeal, in the meantime, it's heard and the board approves whatever they're asking for, that appeal, I would think, would be taken off the agenda. Am I wrong?
Why, why do you think it would be taken?
Because they got what they wanted with the requesting. So why would we hear it again? In court talk for me, when we file, when attorney files a motion and it's, and it's granted, if the other side doesn't like it, they can file a reconsideration motion. In the meantime, if they both agree to it, the recon is taken off the docket. I want to make sure we're doing what my procedure is supposed to be here. That's all, I think we're going to have, if we have other issues, not regarding attorney bills, just any issue on a FOIA request, I want to make sure I understand the procedure.
Madam Chair, I'll be happy. The procedure, I think the issue goes back to there was a discrepancy, I don't want to say dispute, about whether or not there was an affirmative vote to waive the attorney-client privilege. I talked to Mr. Lang. Mr. Lang was the one that made the determination that his bill and information was subject to the attorney-client privilege. I didn't feel it was my role to question that, okay? When that was presented. Release of the attorney-client privilege takes an affirmative vote of this board to release the attorney-client privilege. Someone needs to make a motion that I, that we hereby release the attorney-client privilege. Because that was never done, because we had a motion that was essentially a double negative, I didn't feel it was appropriate that we move forward with it in that regard. That appeal was here. We followed the same procedure for the appeal process that we have. I think you're assuming that it was granted. I'm not disputing your interpretation of it. I just, and I think this motion clears that up all right now. But I think that there's, it needs, release of the attorney-client privilege requires an affirmative vote of the board.
Okay, I appreciate that. But again, if something is FOIA'd and it's denied and in the meantime, they're giving it, is the appeal still going to take place or is it going to be taken off the agenda? Do we still, even though we gave them what they, they're asking for?
Well, it, it all depends on whether or not the FOIA request is denied or granted or denied in part.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a rule call vote, please.
Is everybody done with discussion? I'm sorry, can I ask, can we clear up what this, what we're voting on?
I'd like to make a motion to show transparency for the township. I'd like to make a motion I'd like to make a motion to release the client township bill for the lawyer that did the independent investigation for the township from last meeting. Could I get a roll call vote? At the time, Ms. Nevers seconded my vote. Now I'm asking the chair to go ahead and make the bill available through the FOIA request.
Okay, Roger, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very well. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, supported by Ms. Nevers, to release the attorney bill and waive the client, attorney-client privilege.
And, and, Madam Chair...
Posey, would you please call the roll?
It's, just to be clear for the motion, it's all documents, it's been amended to include all documents.
The motion has been amended to include all documents. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Madam Chair? I have some other issues. This is for Ms. Posey. At the last board meeting, you made a, you made a, to clarify, a statement that you had made about your water bill. And at the time, there was a gentleman that came up, a resident that came up and said his bill was 500-plus. Then it was your time, you said you had a $700 bill. So, just to, in discussion with you the next day, you stated to me that the bill was due to a leak in your pool, and it wasn't really due to too much watering. So that was the clarification. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. It's a, it's a major thing if you have a leak in your pool. Just want to, and you agree with me?
Yeah.
Okay.
$700.
Next item, Madam Chair. Halloween is next Thursday. Please watch out for the kids that are trick-or-treating when you're driving in the subs. Last item. Veterans Day is November the 11th. If you have a loved one or a friend that served our country, please tell him thank you for protecting our country. One last thing for Ms. Posey. I'd like to compliment you and your department, especially your deputy for updating the township agenda, also for putting dollar figures on the agenda. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Very well, we'll move on to treasurer's comments.
Just a little update on the summer tax collection. At this time, we have 31,270 bills that have been paid. Not paid is 867. It's very good odds, and I want to thank our residents for being so upfront with their payments to the schools. Thank you. Also, I want to remind residents that on October the 31st is the last date to pay their delinquent water bills before they're turned over to their tax bills with a 15% penalty. That's all, thank you.
Clerks, comments?
First, I would just like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department, Grounds and Facilities, and Broadcast Media for their exceptional work on the Halloween hoopla last week. It was another exciting and well-planned event for our residents. Also, tomorrow, we will be training our department heads on the new agenda soft, management software. I would like to announce now that the next agenda may be delayed a day or so to allow us time to work with department heads as they attempt to utilize the software for the first time. As for the several comments that were made about a special meeting, perhaps to help the residents understand the water and sewer rates, there has been discussion of that type of meeting, that type of forum with water and sewer and our township engineer. We were tossing our own ideas on how to better educate everybody, possibly give them the opportunity to personally, one-on-one, ask questions. I would like at this point to suggest and see if the board would be in favor of hosting such a special meeting. And if so, while we're here, if we could try and nail down, because we're heading towards the Christmas holiday season, if we could try to potentially pick a date that would work with water and sewer and our engineer department, allow us time to possibly get experts or anybody else necessary to help us conduct that type of meeting. If we could try to attempt to schedule that this evening, I think that would be appreciated by many. I was looking, we, in November, we have our board meeting on the 6th and the 20th.
Madam Chair, if I may, it's on the 13th and 27th.
No, we had to move them up because of Thanksgiving, so they're on the 6th and the 20th.
Okay.
I was, like, I'd be interested to hear if water and sewer and if board members are potentially available on the 13th of November. It's a Wednesday of our off-board meeting.
No.
No. 14th, which is a Thursday.
No.
Tuesday is the 12th.
I can't do a Tuesday, I could do Wednesday, Thursday.
The 14th is fine, Ms. Posey. 14th. I'll make it work. All board members available on the 14th?
That's a Thursday?
Yes. Mr. Van Tiflin, do you think that's something your department? And Mr. Wanglin? Yes? Okay, so what we'll do then is, we'll follow the proper notification for a special meeting to discuss our water and sewer rates. It will be an informational meeting for our residents at that time.
Madam Clerk, I'd suggest you be careful with the use of a special meeting versus a town hall or informational type of meeting versus a special meeting where there's going to be action taken, that's all.
Okay, so which language would you prefer?
I wouldn't call it a special meeting. I'd just schedule it as an informational...
Informational meeting? We will make sure that it's noted accordingly so that there's no problems with that. Thank you.
And, and excuse me, but will we be meeting here?
Yes.
Okay.
Six o'clock?
What time are you talking?
Six o'clock? Does six o'clock work?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure that notification gets posted on our website and outside of town hall. So everybody want to mark their calendars that are interested in that informational meeting on November 14th at 6:00 PM for water and sewer information. Also, we, I just wanted to give you an update. We sent out a mailer to all of our registered voters in McComb Township encouraging no reason mail-in voting. We have been extremely successful with the response to that mailer. We had a 33% response. We've increased our absent voter list by 33%. We have had approximately 5,280 responses to that recent mailer, and we have had people contact us asking us if they can still send it in. We are accepting it all the way through 2020. So if there's anybody that would prefer to vote by mail, please complete the mailer that was sent to your home, or just contact our office, and we will be happy to add you to our list. With regards to the ethics ordinance, I am very thankful that the board members, committee members, residents, and employees all collaborated together to get this done. I am thankful that by working together, we approved a document with input from all in an effort to get it right. So I appreciate everybody's work to get that done correctly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of things. The gentleman and his wife that complained about the sidewalks, this was reviewed by Mr. Gelli, who's the coordinator of the sidewalk program, as well as Luigi Fernandi and Sons, who did the actual work. And they have both determined that a crack does not constitute replacement of a whole flag of cement. That's what I told them, that's what they didn't like, and then they said I was rude. The other thing, Mr. Grayball, about the bridges, it's funny, but we had a meeting with the road commission yesterday, and we did talk about the bridges. And if you'd like more information on that, you can contact Mr. Van Tiflin. I'm sure he'd be happy to go over it with you. And as far as Mr. Parkinson's appeal to me about a FOIA, that's totally out of my hands. The FOIA coordinator is Ms. Posey, and you should complain or comment to her. And the last thing is the mileage rates that Mr. Cusmano inquired. I believe most of that is due to Headley, but if you want a further explanation of that, you can contact Mr. Hickey, and he will be able to guide you through that. That's all I have. We have one item to discuss in closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to adjourn to closed session. Motion carries. We have returned from closed session. There was one item discussed. Are there any motions on the discussion settlement of pending litigation?
Madam Chair, it was just for information purposes only.
Very well. It was just informational only. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support by Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Kryzminski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by saying nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.